Okay, so on the chart, I'd like to call this thing the order. Mayor Vera Papa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Let's see, Mayor.
It's just on approval of agenda, Mayor, thank you. Staff would request to pull Agenda Item D from the consent calendar for a staff presentation, please.
Okay, approval of agenda and waiver of full readings of resolution ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone else have an item they'd like to be pulled? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is Presentations and Recognitions. I'd like to call upon Vicki Beakley to introduce our new accounting technician.
Thank you, Mayor Vera Papa. Council members of the staff, tonight we have with us Taylor Waretz. In April 2014, Taylor joined us as a part-time cashier. During her tenure, she attended college and received an AA, excuse me, an AA degree in business administration. At the same time Taylor was going to school, she was always looking for ways to learn and assist with projects throughout the department and across the city. Based upon the knowledge that she gained while she was here, when there was a voluntary vacancy for the position of accounting technician in the utility billing area, Taylor requested to step into the position so that she could help out the city because, as you all know, that's one of the primary revenue drivers for the city for our water and utility funds. So Taylor was able to make substantial impacts in improving some of the ways that business was done, just as a part-time temporary person who was volunteering at the position. And then when the vacancy came up, we held a recruitment and we interviewed, I want to say there was about eight applicants that we interviewed during the process and then through the final vetting of everything, including an interview with the direct reports and then an interview with me, Taylor was actually selected as the candidate. And on February 1st, she officially became a permanent City of Seal Beach employee. So I'd like to ask Taylor to come up to the podium.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Taylor and I was just recently appointed a full-time position for utility billing. I've been working here for going on four years and like Vicki said, I started as a cashier in the finance department. I also grew up in Seal Beach, so it's really great to be able to not only move up within city government, but to do it in my hometown. So I just want to thank everybody involved and yeah, I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
All right, congratulations and welcome. Okay, the next item is National Tsunami Preparedness Week. Over the past 200 years, the coast of California has experienced at least two dozen tsunamis, 15 of which have damaged our coastal communities. The city of Seal Beach is a tsunami-ready community and will be playing an active role in promoting public education and awareness about tsunami preparedness. Hi.
Hi, City Council, Mayor, City Manager and staff. I'm Corporal Julia Clodby, I'm the Emergency Services Coordinator for the city of Seal Beach. On behalf of the city, I accept, I am happy to accept this proclamation and thank you for recognizing the importance of Tsunami Preparedness Week. It is March 26th through the 30th, and I wanted to let you know about some of the activities that we'll be doing in tsunami preparedness drills that are requested by the state. On March 28th, which is a Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be doing a tsunami walkout. We'll begin in a tsunami inundation zone, which is Old Town, and we'll be beginning up the pier. And we'll be walking to a safe zone, which will be at Balboa and PCH. I welcome all of you to join us. I'll be walking with some of our senior volunteers in policing and our cert team members. Additionally, you may have noticed that we have a new kiosk that is pretty much in that area, right at Main and Ocean. And the kiosk, it was given to us free of charge by the National Weather Service. One side has our inundation zone and our evacuation routes for, in case of a tsunami, and on the other side our rip current information. So those are the activities that we plan on doing. The walkout is so that we can recognize that during a tsunami, the best way to evacuate would be on foot due to the level of traffic congestion with cars. So we will be walking March 28th at 9:00 a.m. and I welcome you to join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Oral Communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the City Manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the City Clerk for distribution. At this time, we're open for communication, oral communication, if anyone has anything to say.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. My name is Laura Wilson, I live in Leisure World, and I've spoken to you twice before about community choice energy, so that tonight will be no exception. First of all, I want to express how pleased I am to know that Seal Beach will be represented at the Community Choice Energy Conference at UCI in April. And I'm delighted to learn that David Spitz, an engineer for the city, will be representing us. His technical skills will be an advantage for that. Many other cities from throughout the county have RSVPs and will include Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Laguna Miguel, Newport Beach, San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, Mission Viejo, Westminster, Oceanside, Anaheim, Glen Park, Costa Mesa, Laguna Woods, and those are the ones I'm aware of. The County of Orange will also be participating. The RSVPs have included mayors, City Council members, city managers, assistant city managers, and a whole wide variety of staff from those cities, so we're very excited. The feasibility studies that the cities need to conduct for community choice energy can be expensive. So one of the things that in a conference like this can provide for cities is that the great collaboration that can exist and can reduce the cost of feasibility studies. So this is really a nice opportunity for the networking, especially with other coastal cities that we have so much in common with. So I just want to say I'm really delighted we're participating and I would encourage the city to send even more staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilpersons and all staff. My name is Clara Wise, I'm a Leisure World resident, and my sharing tonight will just be a really quick thank you. I had the wonderful opportunity with several other friends to attend the Wednesday Planning Conference, and I have never felt so welcomed by such an event. People specifically came up and welcomed us, invited us to the discussion groups, and I was just so impressed that so many people with so many skills and so many skill sets all worked together and came together on some really important issues. And I just feel proud to have been able to be there, and I just wanted to thank you all for opening that up. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Seeing none?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Ross Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. And in the last two meetings, we've been talking about property taxes. Property taxes are paid by everyone that owns property in Seal Beach. And we do get a lot. I think that's the number one income coming in for the city is property taxes. So the city only gets about, what, 15% of those property taxes. The county gets about 6% to 10% now, and the rest goes up to Sacramento. So, and I'm glad to hear that Leisure World now is coming up on their prices. They're coming up to, what, $500,000? I've been looking at the ball and they're coming up from, from, what, they started at $10,000, they're now up to $500,000. But why are they at $500,000? They're at $500,000 because they can add a bathroom and a laundry room. A bathroom and a laundry room. And that's what needs to be done with other properties. Our properties down here are just as valuable as Leisure World, two bedrooms, two baths. We pay just, we pay a lot of property taxes too. I looked at the Eas, it's amazing what kind of property taxes they pay. Amazing. I just looked at two of the big builds up on the Gold Coast, it's amazing the property taxes they pay. So, and Leisure World, they don't have to come down and ask permission from any of you to put a bathroom in? And you said that it was against the rules when the last one was done. Well, so what is a rule about a bathroom when the state of California has already said that you can do those things? You can add onto units and not one person, not even my neighbor. Remember these? My neighbor. Dear neighbor, measure D. She didn't even come and look. The room for the bathroom was already there, we're only talking 40 square feet, and to say that it didn't come in with the rest of the property, that's crazy. None of you looked. If you want to be up there, if you want to know what's going on down here, you should come and look. Look, the bedrooms are being put in at Leisure World at record pace. And at that meeting, I have the tapes. There were two people here that didn't even want to hear it. I have the tapes. You know where I'm going. I asked, I sent an email to all of you. I want these plans back because I need to take them someplace. I need the plans back. Five of them from, I think there were 13. I want them all back. We paid for them because I want to take them someplace else now. I want them back. I emailed all of you, I want the plans back. Where are they? You know where they are? No? So how are we going to get them back? Who's going to pay for them to be reproduced? This is not, this is not normal to re, and this is what they said the last time when there were, when there was no, you can't have any bathrooms. That was Mayor Lawson and someone, the other guy from Leisure World, they said, hey, this is an accommodation they deserve, to have a bathroom over your own Sabbath Street. Just because there's a law doesn't mean that that law has to penalize a person with a senior citizen that's going to come in and move with him. And actually, there's enough room to put a studio on there, another.
You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds. So you know where I'm going, and it's an election year, and everybody's getting all ready for this election. And so, we're going to have to make sure that this year we know who's going to run down here, who's going to run up there, because we don't want people that don't want to get off of those seats and come look at what the people down here in Old Town want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Staff and the public, Seth Eaker, resident of Old Town. It's a pleasure to be before you. I wanted to address a couple of things just about the Lions Club. We were notified that the Lions Club of Seal Beach won from LCIF, that's Lions Club International Foundation, the award for the largest number of grants for emergency disaster relief in the state of California, which was really pretty great. So we just received that award for 1617. And also, I wanted to alert Council, in case any members of Council staff would like to attend, our April 4th meeting at the Seal Beach Yacht Club will be presented an award by the California Lions Foundation. We as the Lions Club are one of the founding members of the California Lions Foundation. And both of these organizations have a pillar of disaster relief and preparedness, and we're really proud as an organization to be able to provide much-needed funds for the state of California for disaster relief. Moving on from that, sorry, I'd like to comment purely as a citizen, not representing any organization, but as a business advocate, a business owner and a resident, on Item D, the facility lease between City and Base City LLC for the restaurant at 15th First Street. I commented on this, kind of the city component of improvements at the last council meeting. And I wanted to reiterate, after I reviewed the lease agreement, that again, I think this is a positive step. There's going to be a beautiful park, there's going to be some development, the River Trail looks amazing. I know the Lions have been working diligently against graffiti in that area and continue to protect it, and it looks like we're doing And it looks like we're doing some enhancements, and there are some local people who have won the opportunity to make an amazing business there. And I think that's great. I think we should support local people and local businesses. I'm excited to see that it's a public-private partnership, that the city is stepping up and doing some improvements, but that the tenant is doing some improvements as well. I know at least two out of the three partners personally and hold them in the utmost positive regard. I think this is an agreement, much as I supported the original fish company and the applicant at the end of the pier, where I think we should have local people with local businesses running local establishments, particular anchor points in our city. So with that, I would just offer my fullest support to the staff, to the council, and to the partnership for hopefully opening and running an amazing and wonderful venue for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak regarding the restaurant lease as well, and I echo Mr. Eaker's excitement and enthusiasm about getting the restaurant reopened, and I agree with him. I think it's a good thing that it's going to be locally owned. And again, I'm looking forward to its opening as soon as possible. Having said that, I did have some questions regarding some of the terms of the lease, and I did send those to you over the weekend, and I'd just like to review those two and a couple more questions. The first, the first question that I have is regarding the historic revenue from the facility. I sent you over the weekend a detailed spreadsheet of revenue since 2004 that I got from the State Lands Commission. What I handed out circulated to you is a Forest Through the Trees quick summary that basically between the years of 2004 and 2012, per calendar year, the total revenue that the city got was about $102,000. That includes the base rent and then, of course, the percentage of the gross revenue. That monthly average was $8,550. In the staff report, they reference a more recent year, 2017, and mentioned that the monthly revenue was much less, about $3,000 less, at $5,300. And this average I gave you goes through 2012. But what happened between 2012 and now, that's sort of the question. The, apparently, the gross revenues, at least the percentage of money that we get from gross revenues from the restaurant dropped by almost half, by 48%. I did these little back calculations based on the $5,300, which includes, now we got for 2017, which includes a base rent plus 6% to 7% of the gross revenue. And so my question is, 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 why, why did the revenue drop so much? Is that number accurate? And the reason why I question whether it's accurate or whether, we all need to question that, is because the numbers that were reported to the State Lands Commission for the period of January 2013 through early 2016 were very anomalous. 15 straight months had no revenue from gross receipts, and then when that resumed, it was much lower than it would have been historically. And I do understand Councilwoman Stasick asked that question, and staff, staff indicates that the 15 months when there was no, no gross receipt revenue was because of a changeover property manager. But even when that, even when that resumed, it was half what it used to be. And so 50, you know, the proposal for $6,700 a month, flat rate, is being presented as an increase from what we got in 2017. Sounds good, but I don't know if 2017 was accurate. And if it was accurate, why did it drop by, why did the revenue drop by almost 50% from the historic level? So that's my, that's my question on that. I had asked about the maintenance of the bathroom, and again, it's now clarified in questions to Councilwoman Stasick that the city will be taking over maintenance of the large exterior beach restrooms. Those were previously under the responsibility of the previous tenant, and I understand the city is not, wasn't happy with that care, apparently. But I'd still like to know, how much is that going to cost? Is that going to be $1,000 a month or $500 a month or what? We do have a citywide janitorial contract that services 13 different facilities in the city. And at that facility, for the restrooms, the current, at least the contract, historically, it's just been for that contractor to lock the doors at the end of the day. So I presume that, that contractor's now going to unlock in the morning and clean once or twice or whatever, per day or per week. So I'm curious as to how much that's going to cost, just so we can kind of in apples-to-apples comparison with the previous. And then...
Robert, I forgot to set the clock, and your time's up, so I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Okay. The other, the other questions that I had was regarding the roof sign. I'm wondering if that's, that's new. The sign on the roof would be new. Could be, could be an issue, depending on whether it's how large it is and whether it's blinking, eat here, et cetera. So I'm wondering whether that'll be covered by the CUP, because typically, signs are covered by the CUP. And then finally, just real quick, the rent has a maximum raise of about 2.5% per year at CCI.
Your time's up, yeah.
And that's, less than what we had before. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Jim Brady, Seal Beach. I just wanted to, I know everybody's aware of this, but last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to attend the city's strategic planning workshop. And I just want to commend the mayor, the city council, the city manager, the department heads, staff, and the city attorney for the job that they did over there. It was, it was very refreshing to see the interaction that took place between all of the people that participated. It, it was smooth. Everybody took it seriously. They worked hard in identifying goals that needed to be achieved. And I, I just think that more people should avail themselves to see how well the city is run. I, I don't know if there was a lot of publicity as far as when it was, because I almost, I found out like almost at the last minute that it was there. Maybe we can publicize it a little bit more, because I think that the, the citizens of Seal Beach would really appreciate the hard work that all of you put in, and also the goals that you achieved in the last, the last five months since the last strategic planning meeting that you had. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eaker. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close that item and go to the city attorney report.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the council. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in a closed session briefly for the one item on the posted agenda. All council members were present, took no reportable action.
Thank you. City managers report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I have a couple items tonight. Since Corporal Julia Klasby's in the audience tonight, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank and commend her for all she's doing as our emergency services coordinator in terms of emergency preparedness, as you saw tonight. And the council issued a proclamation recognizing tsunami preparedness week, and you heard about the activities that she's got planned for our community. Also, as several of you know that have the opportunity to attend, a few weeks ago, Julia coordinated our citywide emergency operations center tabletop exercise. She's also facilitating our CERT Academy that's starting this weekend for the next two weekends. And then, as you see, there's an item on your agenda tonight for the council to approve. I'm a project manager for us, our first-ever hazard mitigation plan that's going to mitigate potential impacts to our community as a result of an emergency. So really, I, it's, I want to make sure she's recognized for all the efforts and all she's doing on behalf of this entire community to prepare us for an emergency. So Julia, thank you for that. Also, tonight, if I could, it was made, brought to our, the city's attention that there's some mailers that are going out from the Seal Beach Processing Center that gives people the impression that it's coming from our parking citation processing center. So I'd like, in the event that other members of the community are receiving these, to have our finance director, Vicky Beetley, just give a brief update on that. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and Mayor, and Members of the city council. As City Manager indicated, there was a representative of this body that received a piece of mail from the Seal Beach Processing Center. In a discussion with the city attorney, since Seal Beach is in fact not trademarked, it is not illegal for somebody to use the name Seal Beach in addressing mail to members of the public. But what I would like to say is that if you do get mailing from the city of Seal Beach or are concerned that it's coming from the city of Seal Beach, that you are welcome to call the finance department and make sure that it is actually, in fact, mail from the city. We would address it with a certain kind of letter that says, hi, I'm Vicky. I'm the director of finance from the city of Seal Beach. We're writing to you because. So just wanted to highlight, especially given that we have a lot of very busy people in the city, and we have a number of individuals who are over a certain age, who might mistake this for something that is coming from the city and therefore would owe money to the city, and just wanted to highlight it and appreciate the council member that brought it to our attention. Again, if there's any questions, you can go ahead and give me a call or anybody in the finance department. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember comments and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. Start on the right side.
I have nothing this time.
Councilmember Stasick?
Yeah, yes. I attended the, the EOC tabletop exercise put on by Corporal Klasby. Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm the rank, so I'm always a little intro. I thought that was, it was a very interesting collaboration, school district and, and the city working together on, you know, a, a potential problem. And I thank her for, for her work because it was, it was a great exercise. A couple nights later, I attended the Maga School Safety Town Hall, similar subject, our school safety, and listened to, I think there were over 50 residents there talking about concerns about school safety at Maga and, and procedures and things going on. So both of those I found to be very informative, and I thank the police department. I attended a small dog survey meeting at the Parks and Recreation Commission last week, and thank you to all the people who turned out to listen to the results of that survey. I attended the state-of-the-base meeting at the Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting put on by Colonel Bond, and he updated us all on happenings at the Joint Forces Training Base. I also attended just this last Friday, along with our finance person, the ACC OC Pension Forum that was put on. It was very interesting and sobering, you know. They told us that even though yields are up, they have re, changed the amortization from 30 years to 20 years, which will put us in a better place in the long run, but may be painful for the next few years. So that's something we have to look at in the next few years. And also, I attended the strategic planning meeting last Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Deaton?
Yes, I wanted to bounce off of that and say, Corporal Klasby, you did an outstanding job. I had no idea when I was going to a tabletop emergency thing what that was going to be like, but it was like being in a real emergency and everybody having to brainstorm and come up with the ideas on how to, to solve it. And it was a wonderful exercise. You did a super job. Thank you. I also wanted to say that last week, Long Beach Fire came and presented to us about what it would look like for them to take over our fire service. So that's one piece of what we're looking at right now, and it was very well done. Whereas, we've still got a few more pieces to look at before recommending that to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the strategic planning meeting, and thank you for the residents that came to that. And I really enjoyed that. I think it's a great opportunity to work with the staff and I get to know the staff better, and a lot of great ideas by everyone that attends that. And I'd like, also like to thank Public Works, putting the sign in our neighborhood to help slow people down. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I also went to the strategic planning workshop. It was very informative and collaborative. It was a great event. It was nice to see the residents there also. I also had the pleasure of reading at Maga Elementary School for the Read Across America. If you ever have the opportunity to do that, it's a really fun event, and I'm sure everyone's welcome. I also attended the drowning prevention task force meeting. Chief Joe Bailey is our chair, and I know we'll be hearing a lot more about that in the near future on some items, very important issue. And I had the pleasure of attending the Lions Club speaker contest at Mary Wilson Library. That was really good. Speakers are phenomenal. It's hard to pick a winner amongst those two individuals, but it was a great event. And just to note, there are many events there at the library, so if you get a chance, check oclibrary.org. There's always something going on there. You'd be surprised. So, thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. We have a motion to approve items A through H excluding item D, which was pulled by City Manager Ingram.
So moved.
Second. Please vote. If it passes 5-0, we will move to item D.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I'll turn this item over to our finance director, Vicky Beetley.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Again, good evening, Mayor, and Members of the city council. Tonight you have before you, for your consideration, the lease for a new tenant at the First Street property. Let me start off by saying that city staff believes this is the best opportunity for the city to improve the quality of the entire First Street area. Since 2014, I have been overseeing the property management contracts, and the information in the staff report was based upon my experience from that time to the present. The prior tenant was to pay the city 6% of food sales and 7% of alcohol sales, and on average, those payments were approximately $5,300 per month. City staff is also aware that a member of the public sent an email to the city council members and perhaps many others, as is the practice. At this point, staff believes that the information provided is factually incorrect and completely misrepresents the revenue picture for the First Street location. There are two reasons for this belief. First, there's a line that indicates gross revenue, beer and wine, on the spreadsheet that was attached. Simple math would indicate that if those were actually the payments that were made to the city, that this restaurant operator would in fact have been doing over $1.2 million a year in sales, just in gross food and, and alcohol sales. I know this to not be the case for that particular location. Second, the city council and the residents may recall that until 2013, there were two restaurants operating, the First Street location and the location at the end of the pier. The revenue that's represented in the spreadsheet represents the annual payments to the city for both of those restaurant locations. Unless the city council, that concludes my staff report. So unless the city council has any questions for me or other members of the staff, because I realize there's a lot of questions that have to do with CUP and with construction, excuse me, with the improvements that are going to be made to bring the restaurant up to code, then there's better subject matter experts to answer those questions. I would like to introduce to you Mohammed Beghdani, who's the president of West Ridge Commercial, the city's current property manager, and James Lehigh from CBRE, who acted as the city's broker in the marketing and the leasing of this property. So if James and Mohammed, would you please come up to the podium? They'll be available to answer any of the council member questions.
Good evening, Mayor, council, council members and staff. I'm James Lehigh. I, I'm with CBRE. I am with CBRE, as she said, the largest commercial real estate services company in the world. I know that there was something out there that said you guys weren't dealing with an actual company, but it is the premier one. Anyway, so yeah, I was the broker on the transaction. Started early, early last year through Mohammed and we had an initial marketing campaign where we do a lot of email marketing. That's how we find a tenant in either a buyer for a property or to lease out a new space. We did an initial blast of about 10,000 investors and brokers in the Southland area. Also did some internal stuff with my own office and other brokers. We had a lot of people kicking the tires, a lot of people understanding that there was going to be a significant amount of capital investment that would have to go into that property to make a good restaurant. Something that the people in the neighboring area would want to go to instead of just people riding their bike at the end of the trail who were hungry and wanted some water or whatever, or to use the bathrooms. And then most of what I say, I'll defer to Mohammed since he's the property manager that has anything to do with like the, you know, the maintenance of the property or anything like that. But we had come up with one outstanding possible tenant who was a local investor and property, a business owner and a property investor, who was so excited about the opportunity and wanted to invest his own money to build a, you know, like I said, a draw for neighborhood residents and people of Seal Beach. So he's going to spend at least a half a million bucks. He's, it's going to be very difficult for him because that, as you guys know, was just too little, too little snack stands. So it's evolved into a restaurant, a restaurant that now serves alcohol, just beer and wine, and then hopefully we take it this one step further and make it a familiar location. And that's on, that's on him. The way we negotiated the lease was so that the city of Seal Beach spends as little as money as possible and it's all up to him in order to create what, what his vision is there. And I think, I think we did that. I think, I heard the other gentleman saying, you know, nothing makes sense here with the profit sharing numbers. First of all, profit, profit sharing or percentage rent is very uncommon. You only see that in large shopping malls from time to time or big Fortune 500 corporations where their accounting is very detailed. I would be surprised if even one or two leases on Main Street have a profit sharing or percentage rent clause in any of their leases. Furthermore, the base rent was kind of backed into on a price per square foot basis, on what was there at like a, kind of a thin wall and also what the other possible tenants were offering. So what, what the other letters of intent that had come in, which were just completely too low or just ridiculous, too ridiculous to even, to even share with you guys. So I, I think what's going to go there is going to significantly improve the area. I mean, the guy's going to build a classy establishment, not, not anything with blinking lights or loud music or crazy parties. It's all, it's all for, it's all going to be a very classy thing. Now, the reason for the length of the lease is because of the significant amount of capital investment that he has to put into the building upfront. So in order, if you have like a five-year lease or a 10-year lease, usually the landlord themselves are going to be doing what they call tenant improvements to make the property ready to jump in and then you'll have a very, like a high aggressive market rent. This, this rental rate is three bucks a foot, like I said, backed into on that, those very thin walls. So it's kind of written more like ground lease. There's no price per square foot in the lease because it's irrelevant. And off the top of my head, I knew there were some other questions, but if you guys have questions about the specific stuff in the lease, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe we have a lot of questions, so we can get started. We don't want you to have somewhere to present.
That was, that was kind of me just answering what I, some questions I think you guys had already.
Okay. Does anyone want to take the lead or we just want to go right to left?
Is it the intent of the owner to apply for a conditional use permit for, to expand the alcohol license?
Not an expansion of the alcohol license, just to get his own beer and wine license and basically what was already there.
So he's just going to do a transfer of ownership?
I don't know, I don't know how he's going to do it. He might do it more clean so he doesn't have to buy it from him, or just apply for one of his own and pay the fees.
Mayor, if there's specific questions on the conditional use permit that's on the property, Crystal Landavozzo would be happy to address it.
Okay. Crystal, do you want to answer that one?
In my minimal involvement with this, oh, sorry. In my involvement, my understanding is that the new tenant proposes to maintain the existing beer and wine license. That type is not going to change. How he's going to obtain a new license or a transfer, that I don't know the specifics of, but it will remain a beer and wine license at this time.
Any other questions?
Music? Is he planning on having music there in the evening?
I don't think, I mean, I'm sure he will, but nothing that will be a nuisance to the surrounding residents.
Would that necessarily be on the conditional use permit is another issue?
The existing conditional use permit allows the hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The existing CUP identifies that non-amplified music is also permitted and live entertainment. However, we did pass our entertainment ordinance, so as long as the restaurant owner falls within the parameters that were set by that ordinance, they will be allowed to have live entertainment and, and music amplification.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
Councilmember Sustafic?
Yeah, I had a few questions. So the hours of the operation are not put into the lease as they were before because...
I don't know the arrangements of the lease agreement itself, but I know that the property is currently regulated by the conditional use permit that's in place. So the resolution regulating that site for the alcohol sales also controls the hours of operation. So 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
So it goes, the conditional use permit goes to 10:00 p.m. even though his hours were apparently till 8:00 or 8:30?
The original restaurant was, the CUP originally was approved in 2001 or 2002, I believe, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then about 2008, 2009, he went back to the planning commission to extend those hours till 10:00 p.m. So the prior restaurant did operate until 10:00 p.m. or was allowed to.
As somebody mentioned, the roof sign, I saw that the signage was allowed, would be allowed what the current tenant has, but they, they were asking for a roof sign. Is this roof sign be illuminated? And if we're approving something before the community has input, are we allowing something that, I had a question about what a roof sign would look like and if it would bother anyone.
Sure. At this time, I think it's, it's a little preliminary. I haven't seen any proposed signage plans. My understanding definitely was that it was going to be a change out of all of the existing signs. If there's a new roof sign.
There was a, there was a new roof sign.
From my conversations with him, I mean, the, the signage is simply to re-identify his new restaurant. It's not going to be a draw or illuminated or anything. I haven't heard anything about that. So I, like, like I said before, he intends it to be classy, so I doubt.
I just would like to know what I'm, what I'm approving, that's all.
Yeah, like, like she said, that's really.
Well, you're approved, I mean, with regard to signs, the lease says is that all signage has to be in compliance with the code. So if a sign permit is required under the code for what ultimately is proposed, then a sign, a sign permit would have to be issued. But the, but the lease in section 612 specifically says that the signage has to be subject applicable laws and permits.
Yeah, the existing sign code does have certain parameters that this tenant would have to abide by. It is a city facility, but any work that he does would still need a permit that would be reviewed by community development. So we would take a look at it, run it through for review to see if it complies with our existing sign codes. And our sign code doesn't allow for flashing or any bright illumination that would cause any disturbance to the surrounding residents or areas.
Okay, so it wouldn't just pop up and surprise people?
It would be reviewed.
That's what I'm trying to figure out there, yeah. I understand that, so understand the city is going to be taking care of cleaning the public restrooms, then that is a, that is kind of a financial improvement over the previous tenant who was responsible for doing that himself, right? So that sort of take, will take away from that lease amount a little bit?
He'll have his own restroom inside his establishment.
Oh, inside his?
Yeah, so and I'm sure it's going to be much nicer, like with an actual door to close so you can, in your stall.
Okay. That, that's another question I had was, is, I was, originally I was understanding that it was going to stay the way it was.
Yeah, he can't, he can't actually change the, the outside without alerting the coastal commission, who then make things very difficult for everybody involved. So he's going to do everything inside, reinforce the walls and in, in fact, reconfigure everything in there, but making, without touching the exterior of the building so that, you know, the coastal commission won't, won't be up as.
Okay, so he doesn't have a plan to expand?
There's no expansion.
Part of my problem with this is, is I, I looked at the previous tenants, he had, he had a percentage in there. Ruby's had a percentage in there and Mrs. Davie told me that when she had made her offer, that she has significant money up front, plus they wanted a percentage, plus a rent. So it didn't seem to me that that was unusual. What, what I was seeing is if he's going to go to all the trouble to fix it up, make it a nice place and bring in business, then that will help him out, but the city, you know, the city will be getting a flat thing. So even though, you know, he could have an event going every weekend, but might require maybe more police time, but the city would not, you know, if his business boomed, the city wouldn't receive any kind of additional compensation to offset any kind of city costs. So that was my, that was my concern was like, everything's flat instead of, you know, depending on the business.
That would definitely benefit the city more just financially, just, just the numbers in the Excel spreadsheet. But we're talking like a difference between maybe a few, few grand here and there, a couple of months. But most tenants don't like profit sharing because they're getting, they're getting a, their performance is hindered by the landlord taking a share of their profit. So it's, it's kind of like an extra tax on them, them doing well, right? So that's why it's just not, not very common. That's all I, but in the last one you guys had, it was hard, it was, it was obviously not working. The profit sharing was, was all over, it was working for a few years and then I think now as restaurant costs are going up and how much, more difficult it is for restaurateurs to be profitable, it's, it's just, nobody does those anymore.
And could I jump in on a couple of things also? The percentage rents were based upon taxable sales. So in fact, if taxable sales do go up there, the city does generate some additional benefit because they were paying sales tax and we get 1% of the share of the, of the sales tax. So that would be a small incremental component. And then the other thing about the restroom is that from the time that the original lease was signed, there was no interior restroom at the unit. And so that's why the agreement included maintenance of the public restroom because the tenant, his clients were going to be going to that public restroom. And then during the time of his tenancy, he actually added a permitted interior bathroom to the restaurant area. And not that I can necessarily make a connection, but in my tenure here with the city, I can think of a number of occasions where we actually received phone calls, some of them directly to the city manager about the condition of the bathroom. And I know that council members have also received emails about the condition of the bathroom. And one of the components of the existing lease was that if anything was in disrepair, they were supposed to tell us on at least two occasions. We actually had to call a contract cleaner in and then charge back the current, or the tenant at that time. And so with the changes in the footprint and the permitted restaurant and the fact that it's the city's public facility and the city really should be responsible for managing the public's facility, we've now taken that under the contract. And because our recreation manager, Tim Kelsey, has such a great relationship with the current contract cleaner, right now, they're doing it at no charge. When we get to the summer, we'll be talking to them because we'll need day porter services and those kinds of things. And the other thing is that given the type of restaurant that's going to be there now and the clientele, it's my belief that it would be absolutely in the best interest of the city to make sure that that bathroom facility outside that restaurant is pristine because we wouldn't want people who just finished there coming over and seeing something that was not really commensurate with the new property that's going to be upgraded.
Okay. It just seemed a bit vague in some places, so that's where my, my concerns came from.
Can I make one more point that you said about the gal who was talking about the potentially leasing the other space and her profit sharing? I called her on her cell phone to offer her the location and the opportunity to, to make an LOI and she said that, that that space would not be a profitable location for her, so.
Okay. No, well, I'm, I'm not saying she said otherwise. I was just.
Yeah, I'm merely just throwing that out there.
Okay. Let me see. I had another, I wasn't clearly understanding also in the park, most of the rest of the questions retained to the special event permits. They mentioned Leif, the lion, such and such, but also weddings and funerals and parking costs being waived or something. So I just wanted to get a better understanding of what, what this was allowing.
I don't believe any parking cost is going to be waived in the lease. I think he tried, he asked for that, but.
There's a, there's a provision for, for the city to consider for certain kinds of occasions, but not, there's not an offer.
Okay.
And, and for special events, especially, and I think councilman you asked about for police costs, for example, we're not giving away any services as part of, as part of the lease. If there's a special event permit and, and in the director's judgment, security's needed, law enforcement's needed, whatever, we would, we would apply the same permit procedure and, and cost billing as we would for any other special event anywhere in the city. So there's no, there's no guarantee of waiving anything or anything like that in the lease.
I, they, what, what I was, what I, why I was asking is, I wasn't sure if this was just a, an incidental kind of thing, like a, a big Leif party or a lion party, or if it would be something as a part of their weddings and funerals that they would be asking for, it, it just seemed a little unclear to me. So that's why I was asking if there was, they were asking for even more concessions or if it was just an occasional thing through a special event.
It's, I think, my perception is in, in a long-term lease, it's trying to think ahead of the kinds of things that might come up in the future. But, but all we agreed to was considering a request in the course of a special event and not, you know, not actually guaranteeing or approving a request.
Okay.
And the, the prior tenant also received some parking credit on their rental. It was a credit against rents.
Okay. And I had a couple, um, couple, I think it was a couple of language. Maybe it's on my original. I don't know where I put that. It was, I'm trying to think of the, of the language. It was saying that it wouldn't be a res, I should find, I should look that up. Let me see what it was. It wasn't necessarily, let's see, let me look it up.
Was that the question about primarily restaurant?
Primarily, yeah. That was the language. I didn't get any answer to that. So I wasn't sure what that meant.
I think it was, if he does a special event, then he's then a catering company.
Oh.
You know, so he's going to have, it'll be like catering and will be regulated.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was some other use.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think he intends to do much else than.
Well, and we, we have a definition in the code of restaurant.
Okay.
And it says as defined in the code, and a restaurant definition, Crystal, help me out, it says food prepared on site, served on a plate. I mean, there's, there's several sort of aspects of being a restaurant.
Yeah, the, that language, I believe, was, was taken, probably borrowed from the CUP. It's, it's standard. Um, it's, it's standard language that we utilize for, um, any restaurant who is seeking approval for, um, alcohol sales. Again, to make sure that it's primarily gonna operate as a restaurant for the service of food, not, um, that it'll turn into more of a bar or some type of club or dance hall or something along those lines. That, that's the standard language that we typically use, is that it has to primarily remain a restaurant.
But it does allow for things like catering.
Exactly, so the accessory uses can be, can be conducted as well. So a wedding, um, something along those lines. But the primary, um, land use, the primary business that operates, there has to be a restaurant.
Okay, um, and the, the other language was, uh, it, it's probably the same thing, but it was talking about on terms reasonably acceptable to the city. Uh, it, it, it wa- that was during parking lot, that was in parking lot events, but, uh... I think that's six point... Six point ten, six point ten? Let's see if it, I think it appeared more than once, but I, yeah, it's in six point ten, uh, near, second line from the bottom, tenant.
The, the language about special events?
Yeah, special events reasonably acceptable to the city. Uh, that whole, that whole...
As a ma- as a matter of law, we al- we always have to act reasonably. And, uh, well, I'm not, I'm not being glib. I mean, the word reasonable is a legal, is a legal term, and, um, it's reasonable to the ordinary, um, person. So as a matter of law, we have to always, we can't, we can't impose unreasonable terms.
You can't have three unreasonably?
Right, so that's, that's why the, that's kinda, that's kind of standard language in a, in a contract like this, is we have to use reasonable best effort, reasonable efforts. So that we can't, um, be arbitrary or unreasonable in the conditions we would appo- impose.
Okay, let's see. And the, the other question was that they're not being charged rent for the first four months. Was that to offset any expense of ours, or what was...
Their, their, their construction time period. They won't have a business operating, so I'm gonna give them some time to, to run away.
So they're not paying anything during that time?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think, James, we should, we should probably note that's a fairly standard commercial lease provision.
Very, very, very common.
They're not generating income, they're, they're putting, doing improvements on our building. It's a fairly standard commercial lease provision.
I believe we offered longer than that for the pier because it was going to be under construction longer, and we did the same thing at the pier. Um, James, how do you establish market value?
Well, we, we do it a number of different ways. I mean, there's, uh, what we call comps. So what are other people paying for the similar type of business? What's, uh, what's my neighbor paying, kind of thing?
It seems hard to establish a comp for that property.
It is, it is. Um, there's not many operating like that, and the ones that are operating as concession stands, I think there's one in San Clemente that's like a concession stand. Um, they don't really do that many, that many, uh, that much in sales. Um, but Main Street, I mean, is a good, I think that's a good indicator for what a business is gonna be able to do in Seal Beach. Um, and three dollars per square foot is, I think, the average over there. I think there might be a couple restaurants paying a little bit more.
Okay, um, you already covered how it was advertised, that was one of the things I wanted to ask for. I, um, the, the next question I have was pretty much what, um, Craig was just discuss, uh, discussing, that the words primarily and the words reasonably are legal terms that we, that we have chosen to use in order to, um, as part of our legal verbiage, if you will.
That, that's correct. Reasonable is, reasonable is a matter of, kind of a common law principle. Primarily comes from, um, we actually have a definition of primary in, in the municipal code, um, which is essentially what, what Crystal just related to you. So, um, yeah, those are both commonly used legal terms.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we want to, um, in six point two, um, say that we're going to have unamplified, allow unamplified music there when we now, uh, allow amplified music?
Well, six point two is what they've agreed to, and so I, I wouldn't recommend that we sort of renegotiate the lease to make it better for them, um, during this, during this, um, conversation. If they wanna ask for something later, they can come back. But they've agreed to a more restrictive term.
That's fine, I just don't wanna write up a lease, though, that's obsolete the day it's, goes into effect.
It's, uh, it's, it's a contract that's, that's acceptable, at least to the other side. If it's acceptable to the city council, it's not obsolete.
Okay, so what happens the day they open and they want amplified music? Can they come down and then, and do the, um, the amplified music permit like anybody else then?
No, the, the provision that they've agreed to is non-amplified. So we're not, they would have to come in and ask for, for, uh, an amendment to the lease.
It would have to be an amendment to the lease. So they, so what about all the other businesses on Main Streets, on Main Street that have leases that, um, say non-amplified?
Um, well, the city doesn't own, doesn't own those buildings. So if those landlords want to impose a different condition, something that's more restrictive than what the ordinance says, that's up to the landlord, just as it's up, up to the city here. Um, to my knowledge, they haven't asked for anything amplified, and they've signed the lease that's, or agreed to the lease that says non-amplified, so...
I think music wasn't, isn't gonna be their main, uh...
No, I know, it just bothers me, uh, James, because we went to, what, how many years? Through this music ordinance, and now we're writing a lease that says non-amplified. So that's kind of, I mean, we went to a lot of trouble. I, no, I, I get it.
Wouldn't they have to come in for a conditional use permit anyway, to get a regular amplified music?
No, we have our music ordinance now.
Never mind.
Well, they agreed to it.
Never mind.
Well, they may have agreed to it, but that doesn't make a good policy for us. I mean, I, I, I'm, I, I, I don't think we should be writing leases that are in, in direct conflict with what we've just passed as a, as where we're moving. Um, okay, let's see what else I had here. Um, oh, I definitely would like you to please in, um, number six ten, change the lease and not say women of the night. Um, that would be ladies of the evening, and it's known as lote. I don't know if that opens up the whole lease again, and if it does, I'd like then the amplified music to reflect our amplified music ordinance. Sorry, um...
I'm sorry, ladies of the evening, is that what you said?
It's lote, L-O-T-E, ladies of the evening. I do appreciate your putting the group in, however. Um, there was a question as to, um, whether or not this would be a use that was compatible with the area. I would, um, suggest that the fifteen years that this CUP has been, or longer that this CUP has been in effect, has been long enough to vet it that, um, we've really, the, the, the only complaints we've really had from the restaurant down there have been, um, the restroom issue and, um, uh, some internal city issues and nothing from the public. Would you agree with that? Yeah, I think so. Um... One of the things I really appreciated, the investment that the, uh, tenant is offering to do, given our current financial status and knowing that we were not able to go in and make those tenant improvements. And I think that's something that should be recognized as, um, part of what the, the city is receiving because the, the building itself is, um, is in need of a lot of work, and we are doing some of it ourselves, but, uh, very minimal, and the rest of it will be borne by the tenant, and I appreciate that. Um, I, I, I have been confused about some of the things that are in leases and not in leases, um, since this will be run by the existing CUP. For those who have never been on the planning commission, the conditional use permit runs with the land. It has an existing, uh, conditional use permit on it. It has existing alcohol on it. It has existing hours of operation on it. And, um, signage also will all, if it goes outside of any of our norms, would have to go before the planning commission. So, uh, all of those things will have public hearings if, uh, there's anything that changes there. Special event permits are always vetted through, uh, parks and recreation and every department that we have here at City Hall that looks at it like police, fire, public works, and all of that. And the special event, uh, permits, unless there's an unusual situation, the person who is applying for the special event permits pay for the extra policing, pay for the extra fire, pay for, uh, parking spaces that they use, and, and so forth and so on. So it's, it, that is definitely not a give to a tenant. They would have to apply, and, um, uh, that would all be taken into account. So with that, um, I may have some other questions if things come up, but that's for, all for now. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Can we, what is the square footage of the current building?
Uh, was it like twenty-four, thirty-four, something like that? Two thousand four hundred some odd square feet?
That includes the patio area as well.
Does it?
Whole.
Yeah.
Whole leasable area.
Okay, and that, and that's how you kind of came up with, uh, the, using the kind of the three dollar from Main Street to...
And, and, and other offers too, that people had said, hey, we, we'll do it for, you know, five grand a month. And I said, sharpen your pencil, kind of thing.
Just let me, let me add a little bit to the, the whole, how do we come up with the price? Uh, to piggyback on what, um, what was mentioned earlier.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit? Thank you. The loud mic?
We've been working very closely on finding not only the highest rent tenant, but the right tenant, and that was very important for the city of Seal Beach, and for us to ensure that it was the right fit. We've vetted the whole marketing process out, despite the, you know, sell your house, I mean, the first one that comes through the door was marketing Charlie, it's out of the market, and we have plenty of offers. However, in going through the offers that we've received, we're very, very, we're very closely with each potential user to make sure that that user was gonna go ahead.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Oh, much better.
Now you can hear me? Okay. Should I start all over again? No.
So we, we, we worked with all potential offers, um, to make sure that the potential user, number one, had the financial backing to come in and to piggyback on what you said, had the funds to get this building up to snuff, to make it a decent restaurant. If you were to walk through that building right now, you would say, how, how could we possibly be serving food? You really have to spend a lot of money to get the proper HVAC units in there, get proper stoves, get just really a major facelift, and that's not cheap these days. So it's not just the market rent, it's who's gonna really come in, longevity, so we're not doing this in three years. To, to kind of just answer your question on market rents.
Okay, what, what about the, the, uh, how you're doing the two and a half years for the CPI percent? What, is that non-standard? I mean, uh, most leases, I would think, is...
I mean, sometimes you'll have increases happen in shorter time periods, like yearly. Um, that was what they asked for, and, and so we said, you know, okay.
Okay.
So it's two and a half percent every two years?
The CPI index, so just to try to track inflation and go up with it.
Every two years?
Every one, two and a half years.
Thirty months, thirty months.
Thirty months.
And I guess my concern is, but, um, that how, if something happens, let's say five years from now, um, they wanna get out, how, how does that work?
It, it is transferable. Um, that would be at the discretion of the city, since they are the landlord, to vet out the new buyer of the business.
At that point, you have a restaurant that's now been cleaned up, it has proper facilities, and you don't have to have to spend another half a million dollars getting it up to where it is now. Then you can go and dictate higher rents, less free rent if you want, but that's more of a turnkey operation. Right now, you're so far from it, whoever comes in has to put a lot of skin in the game to get this thing up and running, and hopefully, they're gonna make money doing it.
And is that, is the half million dollars, um...
That's an estimate.
Or, or whatever it is, gonna be the first four months, uh, put into make it up to snuff, or is that a long-term?
That is the, the initial, yeah, the initial capital investment. He's gonna, he's gonna, um, rearrange the kitchen so that, it, cause you, you guys have all been there, but it's kind of awkwardly located in the middle, and he wants to kind of put it to the side where he can have the seating, you know, just to make it, the restaurant flow a little better, so that'll be expensive.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Tom. I have a couple of questions. How was the, um, property marketed again? You talked about you marketed it and it was on for months and stuff like that.
We did that email marketing campaign, and that brought a lot, a lot back in. Um, we did...
Is that the norm, an email?
Yeah, yeah. Um, also word of mouth with brokers, and then I did, um, like outbound calling to local, local people.
So you called people personally, or you're, you and your team did, I guess? And, uh, is there like a publication?
Can you just keep speaking into the mic, please? I'm sorry.
We're just asking to speak into the mic.
Is there like a publication you advertise in normally, or not? It's not like a, I'm a last...
Typically, sometimes we'll have to do that, um, if we're not getting the kind of traction we look for. This time, we didn't really need it. Um, also, there was a lot of word of mouth going on in the city already, people knowing that they were, um, they were gonna be, be moving out.
Right.
So when that was coming in, um, to, to whomever in the staff that was getting forwarded to us, and then we were, we were vetting them out.
Do you know how long the last tenant was there, roughly, like?
I remember.
Like, Crystal, would you know that?
Started in nineteen ninety...
If you look at the...
Two thousand two, I think.
Two thousand, so about fifteen years.
Well, two thousand two was, um, I think it was ninety-six, ninety-seven when they first went in.
Curious. And, um, you know, getting back to the bathrooms, I remember when the bathroom issue came up at one of these meetings, and some of the residents were upset about the cleanliness and stuff like that. But, you know, quite frankly, I mean, to be fair, it's used by a lot of beachgoers and, and kite surfers and bikers and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people using that besides people at a restaurant. So that was kind of got my curiosity of why they're gonna pay for that building when, it's a city building and, and, you know, it's off the premises.
They're gonna make their own rest, restrooms nicer.
So is it, did it have two restrooms inside, or I haven't been in there in a while, but...
They have a small one that's not very nice. So I'm, I'm sure they'll maybe do, uh, with the space, they've got like a, a unisex restroom that's nicer per only restaurant, um...
And it has to be ADA compliant and all that good stuff?
Yeah, everything's gonna be legal.
So once they touch it and they gotta comply and, um, how does the, um, location?
Can I add to the restroom?
Sure.
Cause yeah, there's a lot of questions on the bathrooms. Um, when we have our property manager come and inspect the building, uh, they inspect the restrooms, and they'll go in there at seven, eight in the morning, not seven, excuse me, eight or nine in the morning when they come in to inspections of the property, it's pretty early in the morning. And by then, the bathrooms already have a stench to them and they're already dirty. So obviously, the tenants, any tenants really not gonna focus on restrooms that don't belong in their premises. So constantly talking to Vicki, it would just, it just makes more sense to maintain their restrooms than have a tenant try to maintain them and keep getting complaints after complaints.
Well, I certainly won't be using those bathrooms. Um, what was it? What special events did the other tenant have at that location? I, I, I'm aware of one, but I wasn't sure. Do you know, recall of any other events? Cause, um, they did have special events there, right? Surf Rider was one, I mean...
But, uh, excuse me, uh, Mayor, I don't know that Surf Rider was necessarily a special event of River's End. It was a special event that happened in the First Street Lot.
Okay.
Um, there was also, so the only special event that I'm aware of that was in conjunction with the restaurant was actually the third of July, special event, which many of us attended. And then there was, um, the one that happened last year that had all the food trucks, and it was something to, there was a lot of food trucks. So I, really, I can only think of about three different special events in the course of a year that happened down in that lot, but are not connected directly to the restaurant.
They didn't have weddings or...
Just periodically, they would...
Graduations or...
That most of the weddings that I recall, and, and Tim might be able to help a little bit better, but the weddings that I recall were more on the sand, out in front of the restaurant, um, putting up, you know, canvases and those kinds of things, not necessarily having the restaurant act as the food provider, but more, there was location-type weddings that happened to be out in front of that restaurant, and then they would leave and go hold their reception somewhere else. So there's periodic events that occur, but they're not directly connected to... So there's periodic events that occur, but they're not directly connected to the restaurant facility.
Okay. How different is this location, would you say, than to like a shopping center or Main Street as far as, you know, your, your job, or finding a tenant and stuff like that?
Well, I have a, I have the luxury of focusing on coastal properties in all of Southern California, spanning from Santa Barbara to San Diego, so this, for what I do, is, is normal, because that's my team's niche. But, yeah, they're vastly, they're vastly different. It's a destination. It's somewhere that somebody's going to go to have a nice restaurant experience with a beautiful view.
Right.
So...
It's destination, kind of seasonal too, isn't it, a little bit, or can be seasonal? You know, I pulled up online the hours of operation, and there was a nice sign that said River's End, but the hours, if you look it up, it's pretty easy to find, but it said on seven AM, Monday through Wednesday to two forty-five, and then Thursday, seven AM to nine PM. And you were saying the CUP was for nine AM to, because I've been there at seven AM myself, so I, I don't know if it, has it, is it changed to, to another time? Because, I mean, that was just his, that doesn't mean that he's following the CUP sometimes within it, and, but I've been there seven, seven-thirty, I wouldn't say a number of times, but a couple of times, just to check it out, but...
Sounds like he maybe was operating outside of the CUP-approved hours. Earlier usually isn't a, a major offense, but it still is outside of what was approved, so we, had we been aware of it, we would have required him to go back to the planning commission to amend that.
So I guess the new hours of operation will be the same as the previous hours of operation, not by his sign, but by the CUP?
Correct.
Right, so it, and that, you said was ten, nine AM?
Nine AM to ten PM.
Okay. Oh, that's interesting, because, um... You know, I, I looked at the numbers too, and I have my own little spreadsheet here, and I thought it was quite interesting too, because it went, you know, from around seven thousand to nine thousand, um, on average for about, about ten years, and then it just dropped to about sixteen hundred, um, maybe three thousand, I guess, combined, but I think, you know, an important point is you mentioned that those numbers included rubies.
Yes.
So their, their alcohol revenue was included in that number.
Yes.
And it's, it's pretty clear that they drank a lot more alcohol on the pier than they drank at River's End.
Yeah.
By the numbers, right? I mean...
The percentage rents were, were actually...
It's probably about three-quarters more, so it significantly dropped, and the, and the average total, I mean, I thought the base point, uh, price was pretty incredibly low, if you will, it was eleven hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the beginning, and it went up to twelve hundred for a couple of years, and then it went to thirteen hundred, I mean, you know, fourteen, fifteen hundred, and someone mentioned you can sleep in a room for that much, you know, place for that much rent, right? But, so, so going up to sixty-eight, I guess, you know...
Sixty-eight hundred, don't forget. What we were talking about earlier is trying to track percentage rent from, from a restaurant. We have a lot of commercial leases that we manage, unless it's a franchise, unless it's a McDonald's, or a Jack in the Box, or Jersey Mike's, where they're reporting their sales to corporate.
Right.
You don't know what you're getting. I mean, how, how are you going to know if, if, if an individual operator says they're making thirty thousand dollars? Well, guess what? They're probably showing thirty thousand dollars to what they're, they could show us thirty thousand dollars, but it's impossible to track percentage sales.
Well, that was the other question I had.
On a smaller operator like this, so we'd rather just keep it flat to where you guys, we know where you're going to be getting every single month, and we're going to track it, that's your income.
And that's all self-reporting, right? Or what prevents someone from putting, you know, and then we have to audit it, and then we have to do this, and then we have to do that, and then it becomes, you know...
You just have to prove that they're correct.
Exactly, I mean, it becomes a big argument. Can you briefly, and I don't want to get into too much, but can you tell how the parking works on a normal parking day, when you go down there and have like a, you know, hamburger and fries? Do they, do they pay for the parking? Do you get reimbursed?
Last time I went, I got a ticket.
So I'll, I'll...
Did you pay it?
I'll jump in and answer that question. So, yes, it doesn't matter what you are, what an individual is doing in the parking, as long as the parking lot is open, the payment is due, and as I indicated earlier in the prior history of the lease with the tenant that was at the location, there were some parking credit, parking revenue credits that were taken against the rent that was due, but anybody who's down there now who's in a vehicle that parks in the First Street Lot does need to pay for parking.
Okay. And, um, so we're only talking like beer and wine on the, in the, we're not talking alcohol or liquor, right?
No liquor.
Okay. And then, will dogs still be allowed to eat there? Not eat there, but hang out there?
I don't know.
I never fed my dog.
I don't know.
I mean, is that, I mean, is that a CUP? Is that, how does that work? Crystal, do you know how the dog situation works with that particular place? Is it just...
No dogs on the beach.
They want to allow it?
It's not in the CUP. It's also up to the health department.
I think people enjoy that part of, of the current and existing, or the previous, so I was just kind of curious about. That's the only questions I had. Does anyone else want to ask another question?
I had a couple more.
Shelley, Scott?
Speaking of Tim and the weddings, I know that we, we get money for, for weddings when they're on the beach. That was part of, part of my question about the special event, was are, are they, are they taking business away from, you know? I suppose if they had it in their grounds, then it's their special event, but if they had it out on the sand, then they'd still have to work through the city? Is that a...
Yes, that's, that's actually a hundred percent correct, and to be honest, the city, I would think, would see an uptick if the restaurants improved, that we would see, actually see more special events happening.
I was just trying to make sure we're getting, we're getting...
And, and, yeah, anything that's outside, so it's all governed by the special event permit, so the person, if they're having it in the sand or the park, they have to get a special event permit with the city, and that would also be the third of July. In the past, it has had no connection with the actual restaurant, the restaurant just chose to do something the same day to take advantage of some of the people there. So that, there, I would think, my assumption would be there would be more special events that would be interested in that area, because they could utilize the restaurant as a reception hall or something after to actually feed people, so they could do, pull a special event permit for a wedding on the sand, and then have everyone go to the restaurant as a reception area. And if the restaurant, with what they're operating, if it's within their CUP, we wouldn't require any kind of special event permit, so if they were within their CUP hours and what was permitted on the CUP, we wouldn't require an additional permit for them.
Okay. In reading the prior lease, it sounded like when he had a special event, he closed the restaurant, or, or it was after hours, or, maybe no one knows.
I think in, in my experience, that was an operational decision from the manager, is he chose to do that sometimes because a party might be more profitable to him than having just being open for dinner.
Okay, okay. Let me see, I have a couple more questions, just of stuff that had come up. Would, would he, the, the tenant be looking at doing dinner all year, or is this going to be another seasonal type of dinner operation? Do we know that?
From what I, from what I understand, he wants to make as much money in that location as possible, so I think he wants to do dinner all night, or all year.
All year.
Yeah.
And, and he'd be able to stay open until ten, because that's what the conditional use permit says? Okay.
Unamplified music.
Okay, amplified, okay. And I understand from looking back at the contracts, that the initial startup of River's End was very small and, and hokey, so I, I think their, low rent started there and...
Right.
And, yeah, yeah. And one other, so, so if the, the numbers that were presented to the Coastal Commission include liquor from somewhere else, do we know what those earlier numbers are for this property? Is it, is it, do we have an idea?
Well, so for clarification, the numbers from the Coastal Commission are, I think, were the assumed gross sales and, uh, uh, food and liquor sales.
State lands.
Excuse me, from the state lands. I assume, that's what I think those numbers, how those numbers were represented, was they were from gross sales, and so they, the numbers would be combined. So the, the payments that came in to that particular account were both for rubies and for River's End. Prior to my having responsibility for the property management, the information is very sketchy. I'm a pack rat, and so I save everything that everybody sends and, and, and put it on a, a drive, but looking for, when we were working actually on the Tidlands lease, we had to do some real digging to come up with some numbers and couldn't find any supporting documents, so the information that's provided on that particular document was purely from a report that was run from our financial management system for that account, and that account is where we posted all of the revenue for the Tidlands operations, which included both restaurants, and they were coming in, in the form of payments from Bank Cap back in those days, and there was no distinction in those dot, in, in the financial record as to which was River's End and which was Ruby's. So there's no, we, we don't have, I have not been able to find the information.
So those are our numbers, we supplied them to the state lands, but we can't dissect out...
Correct.
What happened. And then we came into a period where we weren't getting money and...
Well, and, and quite coincidentally, the, the restaurant on the pier closed at the end of two thousand and twelve, and we transitioned from Bank Cap to Pacific West Management, and in that transition, the, neither the restaurant operator nor the property manager managed that part that was related to percentage rent, and so when they discovered that, they ran a spreadsheet for us, and again, I'm highlighting that the operator didn't report it, because the net loss to the city was about fifty-seven thousand dollars, I think, from what I recall over those, that time period. And so, of course, we have new property managers that have come in and take over and make sure everything's managed, but I think that the, the lack of reporting is also, and the decline in the revenue, is also coincidental to when the Ruby's closed, in addition to the change in property management terms.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
I, I have, do anyone else have any questions or comments? I just had three more things. I did also notice that there is a, a current sign on the roof, on the parapet, right? There, or there used to be.
Does River's End?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a sign on the roof now, on a parapet wall, right? So...
Does it blink?
Not yet, but...
It's going to be pink and purple with you.
But, I mean, it's important to note that, you know, there's already a sign there, unless it gets altered or changed and have to go through the process.
I think they were very careful, just the, like Coastal Commission stuff.
Yeah, so there is a sign there, and if there's another one, they have to go through the process. Also, was there ever a discussion about a ten-year lease with two, five-year options?
Yes.
Is that typical or normal?
That's more typical, yeah, but when you do, when you have to do what needs to be done at that, sorry, when you have to do what needs to be done at that restaurant, you, you just deserve more time, so you can amortize your costs out.
Right, okay. And, and three, what's the maximum capacity in the restaurant? Do you know offhand?
I don't know, I'll hand it.
Do you know what that would be?
It'll have to change, depending on their, how they rearrange the...
So, but, but then...
Occupancy would be set after all of the improvements are, I mean...
So anything above, above and beyond that, does that require a permit too? Or they just shell them in until the maximum, and that's kind of it?
Uh, the building official or the fire department would be able to set the occupancy, and it would be dependent on the total square footage, whether they have fixed or non-six seating and, and those types of items.
Okay, all right, that's all I had.
And Mayor, excuse me, can I clarify? I said fifty-seven, but it's actually thirty-seven. I don't want to misrepresent the, the number.
Thirty-seven and what?
Thousand, the difference between the percentage rent that wasn't reported and the rent collected.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore? Just one last, if the restaurant expands in the future, would that be an addendum to the lease for the, would it increase?
Would, would require an amendment to the lease, as well as potentially an amendment to the CUP, as well as probably most seriously, a coastal development permit.
Okay, right.
And we're not changing the footprint now, at all, I mean...
What, what they are trying to do, if I'm not mistaken, is they're, they're going to make, they're going to make the flow a lot better to where, there's really, the way it's set up right now, you're, there's really not that much seating inside the walls, so they're going to utilize more of the outside patio area, and they're, they're going to expand the roof over it as well, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, I think so. So they're just going to make it, they're going to...
But the footprint...
Because right now, they've got like corrugated metal that's...
Right, right, yeah.
Like a overhang, like a shed.
Like a shading, if you will.
Yeah, so they're going to improve that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Are you ready for a motion?
Would like, someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make an emo, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we approve this lease. I didn't hear, do you need a change in that lease, Craig, to change the women of the night to ladies of the evening?
We'll make that clerical change in the lease. We don't need direction, I think, to...
Well, my question is, if, if you have to change the lease, I'd like to make it with our current amplified music ordinance. Is that a problem?
It's the pleasure of the council. If, if we're going to make that change, then we have to go back to the other party and...
So that was my question. You don't have to go back to the other party on the...
Not to, not to correct a, a term like that.
Okay, so would it be appropriate for me to ask the applicant if they care or don't care to, um, open it or not open it?
That's up to the pleasure of, of the council.
Mayor, could I, could we ask the owner if they were interested?
That's okay, my city attorney.
Could somebody come to the mic and tell us whether you want, what you want to do here?
Are you talking to me?
No, I was talking to the...
The other party.
Basically, sir, what we're asking you is, do you want to open this lease and add the current music ordinance, or do you want to leave the lease as is and just make a clerical change on the ladies of the evening?
Mayor, council, whatever's easier for you, we would love to have that changed to make it consistent with your codes.
Please state your name for the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, David Ko. I'm actually the agent for the tenant and also a partner with the team.
So you would prefer to have it current with the current ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, so then, thank you. That's all I wanted.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to make the motion that we approve the lease, bring it current with our current, uh, music ordinance, which allows live music for two or three, I can't remember, members, but it is a special business license that has to be procured in order to have that, correct?
Well...
Vicki's saying yes.
It, it is a special license, but I, I guess I'm asking what, what you really want in the lease. Right, right now, the only disagreement, I think, was, there's a word, non-amplified in the lease.
So just take out non-amplified?
I bet you were saying was take out non-amplified.
That's perfect, thank you.
Because the lease is subject to the ordinance already.
Okay, yes.
You've got to comply with all the laws.
Yeah, I do, and that's what I want to do. I just want to comply with the law and not make it more difficult, so we're not back here again another day trying to fix it.
If your motion, as I understand it, is to just remove the word, non-amplified.
Correct.
And leave it at music.
And then they're subject to getting the, the licensing and all that, if, so, if they so choose.
Right, if that's not part, you're not expecting, that's not part of your motion.
No.
Correct.
Okay, so let me restate. I'd like to move that we approve the lease as is, striking the word, non-amplified, and changing women of the night to ladies of the evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing for the next item?
Mayor, this is actually an unfinished continued business item.
Correct.
Item number I, so I'd like to call forward our associate engineer, David Spitz, to present this item. I'm sorry, David.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, would this be an appropriate time for a five or 10-minute break?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's take a five or 10-minute break.
The presentation's on, thank you. We'll have to use the bathroom.
Um, unfinished continued business, item I, plans and specifications for the Seal Beach Pier Improvement Project, number BP 1002.
Yes, Mayor, again, thank you. We'll turn this item over to David Spitz, our Associate Engineer, who has a somewhat brief presentation for you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council and City Manager. Yes, this would be as brief as I can make it, but it's probably going to be my longest presentation today. And I will try and get through it as best I can with everybody here. So this is my update on the pier project. I've brought a lot of updates before the Council. So I would like to bring another one today, especially as it coincides with the item on the agenda. So today, uh, gonna talk about the, uh, recommended Council action. And then we're gonna go into a little bit of a brief history on the pier repair plans and how we got into this point today. Go over the plans, not completely in-depth and go sheet by sheet, but I'd like to highlight a couple of key items on the plans. And then touch bases on the schedule again. So the first item is the recommended Council action, which is to request that the City Council approve the plans and specifications for the Seal Beach Pier Improvement Projects, number BP 1002, and then authorize staff to solicit for bids. So that's the action before you today. Little brief history, I'm gonna kind of talk about how this started as a utility and decking project. Uh, some of the past structural assessments that were performed on the pier just recently. So the damage that occurred, and then some, uh, consultant performed what we call an end of the pier assessment. Uh, the purpose of this assessment was to identify any potential structural deficiencies and make recommendations depending on what kind of loading was requested to be at the end of the pier. So we wanted to make sure that, that the end of the pier could, A, support a potentially bigger one-story building, or at the time, look into what were the necessary structural improvements to support a two-story structure if that was the direction. Then, in 2015, staff contracted for a pier structural assessment report. It's a proactive approach that the staff conducts every five years to look at the entire structural assessment of the pier, both underwater, underdecking, and above decking, and recommend improvements. The last structural assessment report we did back in 2015 identified over $900,000 of improvements. Seems like a big number, but it's actually kind of standard, that amount of money about every five years, just for structural repairs of the pier. Uh, back in 2014, on October 26th, Hurricane Marie hit. Caused some damage to the end of the pier. For instance, a couple of examples, there was a broken pile cap, and I'll go into what that means here shortly, and some broken bracing. Estimated about $50,000 repairs needed due to the damage caused. And I showed some pictures here, brought in some pictures of the hurricane back in 2014. Here's one, kind of get to see how tall the waves were. Here's another picture that kind of shows it really well, hope you can see what... But some of the waves got almost to the deck level, and it caused some good damage out at the very end of the pier. Uh, going a little bit into some of the prior Council action. So this was back in beginning of 2016. I just wanted to touch bases on this briefly. Staff brought a report to Council, uh, looking at different options for what to do at the end of the pier. Whether we wanted to go with a open deck, a potential building at the end of pier, or just a potential restaurant. And so, uh, I believe this was February 2016. And, uh, so staff presented options, uh, and at the time, here, really quickly, these were some of the cost estimates of the different options that we presented. These were back in early 2016, late 2015 numbers. And at the time, Council's direction to staff was to proceed with option four, which is new one-story building at the end of the pier. And these were the breakdown components of that option. Talking about, uh, Hurricane Marie repairs, other repairs, um, utility lines, decking, permitting, environmental control documents, came out back in February 2016 at 3.88 million. Shortly thereafter, we had the electrical fire at the end of the pier. Caused significant damage from approximately Bent 74, and I'll go over what those mean to kind of distance markers for the city. But from Bent 74 to the end, which is about Bent 82, there was burnt piles, pile caps, stringers, decking, utility lines, and buildings. Here's a couple of pictures that kind of bring us back to when that happened. That was the end of the pier right after the fire. That item right there was the Edison transformer that was removed, and some other components. Couple of below-deck pictures, uh, you can kind of see, these are the piles and a lot of charring and burning, especially on the, uh, underdecking members and the decking itself. That shows the edge of the bait shop, and again, you can see all the burnt members underneath and above. So to bring us from that point to today, uh, some of the items that have taken place, all the burnt structures were demolished and removed off-site. Edison came out and removed all their equipment. This is the transformer and all their wiring that was on the pier. All the other burnt structure members, including a lot of decking and some underdecking stringers, were removed. Uh, the city went through the environmental process, went through the sequel process, and we have an approved mitigated negative declaration on file. City also went through extensive permitting, outside agency permitting process, including California Coastal Commission, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, those were a couple of the permitting agencies that we've received permits from to do work on this pier. And we've been, uh, we've been progressively working on updating and completing the plans and specifications, which, again, this is an item that's brought before you tonight. That said, this is just to cover see the plans. I have them up here too, if anybody wants to look at them after. But brings us to the plans. I want to go over a couple of key components of the plans. I won't go through every sheet, but just a couple of key components are the structural members, utilities, and the decking, and then some other items I'll mention at the end. Going into structural members, I'm gonna mention a lot of, uh, like pier, uh, language, and I just wanted to kind of go over it with you first. This would be, uh, a profile view or a cross-section of the pier. So if you're standing on the beach and looking directly out and you could see into the pier, this is what it would look like. So the items we have, the first item would be the piles. These are those telephone pole-looking structural members that actually fully support and hold up the rest of the pier. Above that, or, sorry, uh, these diagonal components are what we call cross-bracing. They help keep the piles in alignment. Above the piles are the pile caps. We also call them bents. They help with dimensioning of the pier, and you kind of think of them like I-beams in a house. So they connect from each of the piles right across the top there. Then running perpendicular to the pile caps are the stringers. These are, I believe, two-by-twelves that run about 20 feet long from each pile cap to pile cap. That's these guys right here. On top of that, you have the decking. And then just the last item to bring to everybody's attention is over here in this corner, you can kind of see the cylindrical, uh, objects. Those are the utilities. We keep everything in kind of like a utility corridor off to one side. So with that said, one of the first items is the piles. There's a lot of, uh, construction work that needs to happen at the end of the pier. So this is the end of the pier. This, uh, would be the very end on the water side, and this would extend all the way towards the pier. So this is what we call plan view, bird's-eye view, if you're above it and looking down. This would be the end of the pier. These dots signify tops of piles that have significant burning and charring and need to be repaired, whether that be topped, capped, uh, grouted, or, uh, other repairs as noted in the plans. There's only a couple of piles, these two in red, that would be under the city's responsibility. One of them was due to damage from Hurricane Marie, and the other one is, uh, to be built with the ability to extend part of the pier decking to get a full rectangle and cover where the old fishing boat ramp is. So those are the piles. Moving forward, the pile caps. These are like the I-beams that go above them. Again, same part of the plan. In red are the pile caps need to be repaired and replaced. Again, this is all due to the fire damage from the electrical fire back in 2016. There are a couple of locations in green that the city's responsibility. Again, we, our plan is to extend the decking to cover the old fishing boat ramp that's out of service right now. Third structural member, stringers. Again, I know these plan sheets look like they're very, very congested and confusing, uh, but... That area shaded, again, would roughly be the burnt, or the area where the fire hit. So that's, uh, stringers that all need to be replaced or have already been replaced and need to be removed while the, uh, piles and pile caps are being worked on and then brought back out. And there's also some stringers that would be under the city's project. I shaded a little bit of area. This had a little bit of damage from Hurricane Marie, and it would help in the, uh, putting the extra decking on the end of the pier. Showed a couple of pictures, uh, during the demolition of the structures in the end of the pier, just to get an idea. These members are the stringers, these guys. Obviously, the decking's above. It's tough to see, but then there's the pile caps that run underneath the stringers and then the piles themselves. Here's another good picture. This shows the piles that I mentioned before, the cross-bracing, the pile cap above the piles, the stringers, and then the decking. And that picture's impossible to see, alright. A couple of action pictures when they were demolishing the building and other burnt structures. This is them removing a section of stringers and decking that were completely burned through. And this gives you a little close-up view of how much the fire affected these, uh, stringers. Took about 20% plus out of them, which completely affects their structural capability and so therefore they need to be removed and replaced. Uh, the next item in the plans, one of the big components, is talking about the utilities. So we're talking water lines, sewer, gas, communications, and electric. And I'll get, I'll go a little more in-depth on electric as it relates to Edison work too in a second, but... So here we have another aerial view of the pier, uh, from the beach all the way out to the end of the pier. So in dealing with the utility lines that need to be replaced as part of this project, which is both, as I mentioned, partly joint-city project and a, uh, insurance claim project. The first item in blue, this is the portable water and fire lines. So we'd be replacing from the very beginning of the pier all the way out to the end. Sewer force main and a sewer pump station, same thing, from the very beginning of here all the way out to the end platform. Electrical and communications, gas, same thing for all the utilities. What I do want to show you is this is roughly the extent in red. Wow, this was so much easier to see earlier. But this is the extent, that red line, to roughly where the, uh, end of the fire hit. So as you can see, a lot of this utility line from here all the way to the beach would be the responsibility of the city under a city project. Only portions after the burn line, in essence, would be part of the insurance claim. With one exception, which is electric. So let me dive into electric a little bit more. Uh, aerial view of a portion of the 10th Street parking lot in the pier. So this is, would be where the top lot is, 10th Street parking lot, and this is the concrete beginning of the pier. So what I want to touch base here is what the new electric plan would be for electrical, uh, power on the pier. The current, that little red box at the bottom is the current SCC vault. That's the Edison vault where all the power comes into our beach environment. Before, power would just go from that transformer out onto the pier all the way to the end, which is where the transformer was. And then from that transformer, power would go to the building, would go to the boat ramp, would go to Zero Tower. So it kind of, the lines would go out the pier that Edison owned, meter, transformer meter, and then the city would own the lines from that point. The new Public Utilities Commission regulations for transformers and the such are, they're not to be over water. So if we were ever to replace any of that electric, uh, conduit and line, we would have had to bring the transformer and all the electrical lines off the pier onto the beach, or away from the overhead water. So now, the fire hit, burned up the transformer, Edison came and moved it and said, alright, it's got to go on the beach. So the new transformer location that we've worked through would be, wrong button, would be right where that red square is, uh, kind of against the wall, the retaining wall against the parking lot. So you'd have power going from the existing SCC vault to the new transformer. And that's, in essence, where Edison's ownership would end. After that, we would take control of power supply, leading to different fixtures that require power. Uh, we would have a meter cabinet and pedestal in an enclosure. So that's kind of what the whole enclosure would look like. Similar to what we have at the 8th Street pump station, uh, a lot of those devices, like this meter and panel, were enclosed at the building, which is at the transformer previous that was up the end of the pier. But none of that's down there now, would have to go on the beach. From that point, we would run power lines all underground to the pier, up the side and conduit, and then they would run out the pier to all the facilities that require power. Pump station, future buildings, boat ramp, stuff like that. Uh, as an add-on, the city's adding a little bit of work, part of the plans, to the electrical. There's a current SCE, Southern California Edison vault, in a enclosure under the pier. It's extremely old. It, it handles, uh, has some meters, handles a little bit of power. Uh, users that are along the pier, like the bathrooms and some other stuff like that. So we would run power from there too, as well. Coming into the third big item, decking. I won't go too much into this, but we've already done, uh, here's the same aerial. We've already done three phases of the decking. Uh, as part of this project, we would do the fourth phase, which is highlighted in green, new Greenheart decking at the end of the pier. In addition, we're going to redesign the utility corridor, uh, which is where all the utilities are housed, to make it easier access for future, uh, improvements or maintenance. That blue line would show you the utility corridor. It starts about the water line and goes out to the end of the pier. And again, I'm gonna show that line. That's, those dashes show where the, the burn took place, where the fire took place. So items in there would be responsibility of the insurance company for replacing existing. We're going to upgrade to Greenheart from the old Douglas fir, as we've done with the first three phases, so we'll continue on this fourth phase. Uh, this is a pretty good picture that shows, uh, this wood down here is the new Greenheart where Phase 3 ended. There's a line right there where Phase 3 ended, and this is all old Douglas fir that was going to be Phase 4. So we'll be replacing all this Douglas fir with Greenheart to match the rest of the pier. Alright, almost at the end, bear with me. Uh, last couple of items on the plans to go over, couple items, handrails and lighting. So we'd be replacing all the handrails in these highlighted green section with new galvanized aluminum top handrail portions. The old handrail kind of looks like this in location. It's just a flat, uh, two-by-six, I believe. Uh, you know, gets cut on a lot, and it gets pretty dirty. It's tough to clean. Uh, we'd be replacing it with, uh, galvanized, uh, aluminum pole. Uh, there's some locations already on the pier that have this. We put them in, uh, four, four or five years ago, maybe? And so we'd be replacing the rest of it with this. Here's another picture, shows sections of the pier that already have that aluminum. And then lighting. Couple of the lights were damaged during the fire. Part of the project is to replace them. Uh, I figure if we're gonna have some nice, good, new lighting out there, we'll, uh, refurbish all the lights. So kind of this is what one looks like right now. All those yellow dots signify where all the lights are. It's about 35, 36 total. And we would have a bid item to, uh, remove, refurbish, and replace the lights, so that they'd look brand-new. Last item really quickly, just, uh, as a quick reminder, everybody, I know I brought this to Council last meeting, but I wanted to show it again, quick construction schedule. Uh, here's the construction schedule showing us through the project plan, specifications, construction management, bidding, award, and then construction. Uh, we are right there, right through that milestone, which is plans and specifications. So we are on track, still intend to keep the same schedule I've, I've brought to Council pretty much every time I've stood up here, which is to start construction September and finish construction in nine months hence. That concludes my longest proposal, uh, longest presentation, I think, so far.
Thank you, that was very informative.
Any more questions?
I have a question. What does QSD stand for?
Qualified Stormwater Developer.
Oh, thank you. You develop stormwater?
I tend by, by license, yes. I tend not to.
Any other further questions to the presentation?
A couple of questions. My questions were about the money that we paid for sewer and, um, water lines, but you're saying that most of that is on our, on our dollar anyway?
Correct. Uh, portions, like, like for instance sewer. The pump station was damaged by the fire. So that is something that staff is working with the insurance company, where it'd be under the insurance company's, uh, under the claim to the insurance company to replace. But most of the lines are not damaged by the fire. They're just aging infrastructure that the city wishes to replace. A good amount of it, because it would...
My question is, is that, that that's paid for, if it's a pump station, will that money, when it gets reimbursed by the insurance, will it return to the enterprise fund? Yes? Okay. Couple others. You showed the utilities in a box. We were talking some time ago about how the utilities should kind of run down the side so you don't have to pick up the decking. Is that...
Yeah, I, I remember that was brought a couple of years back. One of the reasons for proposing that was, uh, for cost savings and speed of installation. Uh, normally you don't want to put the water line outside of the pier. Plus, the gas line's already outside, so you'd have to start removing certain utilities and replacing them anyway. But if we're gonna be doing an entire pier project, we're replacing other lines and we're already in the utility corridor, it makes a lot more sense to put the water line back in its existing location.
And we hope it'll last for a little while if it's new, I guess. Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, I think I have one more. Let me see what it is. Oh, sorry. And this is being constructed with specifications from option four, from what the City Council decided in February of 19, I mean, 1920, 16?
We're, we're still mov-, uh, still moving that direction, which is to do all the construction, reconstruction of the fire damage and other necessary repairs to make the pier able to house a one-story building at the end of it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one question. On the, the wood takes eight months or something to get. Would it make sense to order that quickly?
Yeah, it, it potentially does take a lot longer. We would anticipate, uh... This item right here says, "Order the long-lead items." The minute the contract is approved, we would order it right there. By the time it gets to the city, uh, their contractor's fully under construction. They're not ready to, to put any of the new decking down anyway, because they're working on substructure members, utilities, pump station. The decking is the last thing that they would build, and it would be, it, it's anticipated to be there in plenty of time for them.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I have a quick question on the utility box or vault. Was there a side view of that? I mean, is that like gonna be in a fenced area or a box, or...
Here, let me...
How's that...
It, it's not...
Kind of hard to, I mean, it's not at, at grade, right? That was, I think you passed it, right?
Uh, no, I know, I know which picture you want me to...
The one in the parking lot.
Oh, that's...
Parking lot.
My bad, I thought you meant the utilities on the pier. Uh, it would be a concrete pad with an Edison transformer on top, with a, uh, some panels and a cabinet next to it. We would enclose it, put, uh, bollards around it, things like that.
Like a fence enclosure, or... Nothing more attractive than, I mean...
We can, we can definitely...
I'm just kind of curious, just to...
The, the...
It's kind of a nice view from the top of that railing, you know, and you're looking down at a vault, and... You know what I mean? It's just, if you go to that picture where the, um, you know, they put the nice clock tower there, and they put the nice brick there. I know a lot of people stand there, like I do, and look over the edge, and, you know, look out in, in the ocean, and you guys see like a, a green fence with a couple of boxes in there.
We can definitely...
I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm just kind of throwing that out there, because it's just...
It's seals on it.
A fencing isn't the end answer. We can definitely look into...
And even on the top, I'm not sure what, you know, it's just, I don't know, there's something to think about.
It's gonna cost a lot of parking.
And you're gonna lose about eight parking spaces at least, right?
Uh, the squared-off area right here has no parking. So we, the hope is one or two, maybe three, max.
That's true.
Anywhere else we put it, would probably be more parking to lose.
Yeah. I'll just revisit that, just to look from, you know, from that vantage point on top, is what you're looking down upon, and, you know, plus people probably throw things in there, or, you know, trash pucks in there and all that good stuff. And, um, on the hand railing? I know you have this really nice round, galvanized railing. Is that like the, the latest and greatest aesthetic feature for railings? Or is there another one that can go in there, because you're gonna replace it all, right?
Yeah. We can definitely look into other options.
I know, I know you don't want wood, because people cut on it and then they leave, you know, fish droppings and stuff like that on there, but...
It was, that was the main reason.
I guess the galvanizer's a rust and all that stuff, but, yeah, I mean, if you're gonna replace it, I mean, you're not gonna continue. You're gonna replace it, not continue from, from that other picture, that next picture.
It looks like they're matching existing.
Are you are matching?
Yeah, we would leave what's existing.
Are you leaving that there and just continuing?
Yeah, you would, you would, uh, remove this, uh, the top boarding and just...
I thought you were replacing that soon, okay.
Um, I think also it was, uh, round for the reason of not cutting on it, so... The whole idea was we were just getting so much fish cut on it, and, and people don't take care of it.
That was balanced and flat.
Um, David, could you go back to your picture that Mike was talking about when you're looking over that rail at the box?
Am I going the wrong way?
I think so.
What do you tell these?
Okay, what about moving it, um, to the right and up just slightly into the, um, not into the park, but onto that buffer area there?
To the, this area?
Okay, then up, right there.
On, uh, Edison has not shown willingness to put their structure above where they can drive up to their transformer. They need to be able to drive right to it and do maintenance and repairs.
Well, I can't see the, the elevation from here, but I was thinking it would be partially on the parking lot, partially on that dirt, and move it away from that rail that Mike's talking about.
Uh, I see what you're saying. This right here is a retaining wall. It's probably about, what, four feet in places, bigger in other places. So, uh, this is a angled, probably 30 to 40-degree slope of vegetation above a four-to-five-foot-high retaining wall.
Yeah, it's a slope there. Can't go under the pier? Does that go under the pier?
I...
She said there's already something there, already...
Yeah, there, Edison already has equipment there that we're trying to actually remove due to its, its age and its inaccessibility right now.
Alright, I'm sure you'll look at it closely, but, I don't have any idea.
Um, I know from some experience of working with SCE that they have regular, I'm sure you know the regulations that surround their transformers. You can't put anything that would obstruct... would obstruct them getting into the area to fix it, and it has to be a certain distance, any fencing or anything you put around it has to be a certain distance from the tan and, you know, so it might not be quite as straightforward-looking.
Edison's already, in essence, already designed it and would put it in...
They've already designed it? Have they designed the, the wall or in, yeah, the obstruction of the transformer itself?
I'd have to look to give you that exact answer, but...
I don't think they do that.
They don't usually...
They don't care.
Yeah, they want bollard around it, so no car can drive right into it.
Yeah, sure.
But other than that, they usually leave that up to the agency, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and it's got to be so much bigger, you know, distance from the edges and...
Yeah, and it's got to be raised a little bit off...
It's really, yeah. It's not easy.
Alright, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I, I move the, let me see what we're doing here. We approve the plan specifications for the Seal Beach Pier Improvements Project, number BP-1002.
Second.
Please vote. Passes five-zero, thank you very much. We will move on to new business, reauthorization and continuation of public education on government access fees for state franchise video services.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, I'll turn this item over to our city clerk, Robin Roberts.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item is being brought to you to basically keep and maintain the public access or PEG fees that are provided through state franchise video providers. Currently, the city receives one-point-two percent from state video franchise providers to provide public education and government access. For instance, this very council meeting and some of the items and employees that helped put this together, there's a PEG fee to help provide that programming to the public. Back in November of two thousand and seven, there was new law established that was titled Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of two thousand and sixteen, otherwise known as DISCA. And at that time, it required that all cities place an ordinance, our ordinance was number one-five-six-three, and to place to allow a mechanism for us to continue to providing the PEG fees. This ordinance is only related to the PEG fees and is not related to the franchise video fees. Because some of the state franchise video providers, franchise agreements are, had expired or expiring over the last few months, all cities are required to reauthorize their original ordinance, so that that continuation of the one-point-two percent can flow through the city. Our, the Seal Beach budget on page twenty-four is the page that indicates those types of fees. The actual fees in two thousand sixteen, fifteen was one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, and the current budget just has an estimate of ninety thousand, as we know these fees could vary from year to year. By adopting this ordinance, it will provide the city the ability to continue to receive those fees. I also want to note that I've presented to you this evening a change for attachment B. Originally, when I was working with the finance director and the city attorney on this ordinance, I was hoping to come up with a mechanism so that we wouldn't have to come back to council every ten years or so. So I had changed some of the municipal code, and later found out from our city attorney that we needed to maintain the wording that was in there. So I gave you a new attachment B that only shows, the only addition to this ordinance is the ability to collect late fees if required. And if this item is approved, then I will adjournize it at the next reading for its second reading and formal adoption, and it would go into effect thirty days later.
Great, thanks, any questions? Anyone make a weak emotion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second. Please vote. Passes five-zero, thank you very much.
That's ordinance number... Robin, what's the number?
I believe it's one-six...
One-six-six-four, an ordinance of the city council of City of Seal Beach, reauthorizing and continuing the city's public educational and government PEG access support fee.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn, I'd like to request for staff to bring an update to the city council for the Gum Grove Nature Park Restoration Plan, next month sometime? Thank you very much. We will adjourn this city council meeting to Monday, March twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, at five-thirty PM to meet and close session if deemed necessary, thank you.